I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled council meeting for November 19th, 2024, on this illustrious November evening. Al Horst. Could you please call them all? Councilmember Al Horst.
Here.
Paul Cass. Gerald Bell.
Here.
Ryan Callen.
Here.
Angela Hammond.
Here.
Adam Mizzi.
Here.
And Mayor Morrison. I am here. We have a quorum to conduct this. First step, approval of our council minutes from November 12th, 2024, special council meeting, canvassing election, and the October 29th, 2024 study session minutes. Moved by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any additions or omissions to the agenda this evening other than the three presented? Any additions or omissions? If not, I take a motion for the three additions. Moved by Jerome, supported by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She passes. I have nothing for mayor's report since we just had a council meeting last weekend, oh what we could spin. So we will go ahead and move on to consent agenda. A and B, I will revoke them although, A is to motion to waive the readings in the entirety of all ordinances and resolutions on tonight's agenda, and more importantly, schedule a truth and taxation meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Take a motion for one or both. Moved both of them, Ryan or Al?
Motion.
Both is our support. Support by Ryan. Any discussion? A quick reminder about truth and taxation. That has to do with what our budget is and our tax levy. Just so everybody is aware of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She passes. We have no requests to appear, so we will go ahead and move on to committee reports. The library minutes are in your packet. If anybody has any questions, please let me know. Treeboard, I agree to say.
I think most of the offense would be motion to adjourn.
HRA?
HRA, and we'll find that we have minutes from June 13th, July 9th, August 13th, and September 10th, and we are in the middle. Our management is top-notch, and we're moving forward.
And then we have Rams also in there. Anything from there to report, Angela?
The minutes are in the packet.
Thank you. All right. Al, budget.
Okay, the budget committee has a recommendation to remove $5,000 from the 2025 fire department budget and reducing the 2025 general fund money by $5,000.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And we have a recommendation from the budget committee to spend any remaining budgeted money from, for the HPC from the 2024 budget in the 2025 using the fund balance, and that is one.
Is there support? Support by Jerome. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Also, I'd like to add that we have a recommendation from the budget committee to recommend a budget as presented with the amendment to the fire department budget for the truth and taxation meeting.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She passes. Are there any other committee reports that we need to hear from council? Any other committee reports? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to departmental reports.
On the, after we have the posting of equipment operator position, we did post this position internally back in July. We did have two equipment operator ones that actually were tested and moved to equipment operator two. That still leaves us with an open position with the transferring of an op two into the building maintenance department. So with the council's approval, we'd like to post this externally for a hiring of an equipment operator.
Moved by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
We also have one other addition, like Phase One archaeology survey for Hill Valley.
Yes, this goes along with the FRTP funding of 200,000 we receive for additional phase of mulberry trail. One of the requirements is to do an archaeological study, align those alliances to determine if there is any cultural artifacts. So it's a two-step project. First, they go through, they walk the routes, they determine areas of interest, and then they come back and they actually do test hitting excavations to see if they find any artifacts. And you can see in the proposal, there's a second part of it that would be if any artifacts are found, then those are cataloged and curated. So we have done this before on multiple projects, on the waterline project. Sue did this work for us on the last phase of mulberry trails. She did this work for us, so this is kind of commonplace. But it's going to be a bit delayed just due to the pending weather, so some of this work will occur in the spring, but we'd like to get her going as soon as possible, at least some first phase. So this would be reversible through the grant funds we have in place.
Any other discussion or questions?
Karen, what about that cultural artifacts I discovered in the period? Where did those end up?
I would assume in possibly Native American Museum, quite possibly at the Boys' Fort Heritage Museum that they have. We would assume if there was to be anything found in this area, that's what would be, maybe from the Native Americans. We haven't found any in that area in the past. That area has been logged historically probably a couple or three times. But it's just one of the steps in our environmental requires for the federal process.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or do we have a motion again? All right. I need a motion. There we go. Let's take a step back. Moved by Jerome, supported by Adam. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on. Fire, do you have anything else?
No.
All right. Archie.
Good evening. I just, as all of you know, the fire department 2025 budget included an additional request this year to start a replacement here on the fire department. Fire department has turnout here dating from 2013, 2016, 2018, 2020, 2022. We need to replace that year when it becomes 10 years old. So the 2013 year is up for replacement. But based on the years I just stated, you can see that we're going to have a few years ahead of us of having to replace here as it gauges out. And so the change that council forensics talked about this evening from the budget committee was it does look like we can buy up to six of that year with remaining funds from 2024. So as a result of that, we're able to reduce the request for 2025. So that's the reduction of the fire department budget for budget request for 2025. With that, I can just share in the last week since we last were together, even fires responded to three medicals in one fire call. I do want to move to fire call. I think I sent you all an email with a press release on that. It was a call to the hub in town. It was a call that had to do with a boiler malfunctioning, and because of that, we had this carbon dioxide call. And I just want to reiterate what I wrote in the press release. I was impressed to see the way that all tenants of the hub reacted. In the other case, people were calm. They closed their doors. They got people off. In particular, Happy Days preschool did a very nice job of ensuring the safety of their children and their care. They began evacuation of the building even before the carbon monoxide detectors went off. So when the detectors started to go off, about half of the children were already out of the building and the remainder were quickly evacuated. They kept safe on site and they put an emergency action plan in place and really did a nice job. So I did want to point out that with that phase. We were able, the fire department was able to ventilate the building and also to monitor the building with gas detectors. And once the numbers were down to zero, the carbon monoxide levels were down to zero, they were able to reopen the building that evening again. So Happy Days is able to be back there this morning in their space, and the building is being heated alternatively right now until the boiler can be treated. So I just wanted to give you that. That was kind of a, it's kind of a big call for the fire department. It was good to see that so many people did what they were trained to do. That's all I have to say. I have two more questions.
Any questions?
Also a good reminder, we need to have working carbon monoxide detectors. There's almost sophisticated the ones we have in our house, but...
They are, and I believe KTR is going to be up here tomorrow and just talking specifically about carbon monoxide detectors and how important they are. You might get tired up here during that for me and each of these meetings, but we are entering that season again when furnaces are kicking on and the important carbon monoxide detectors, I don't think, will escape.
Thank you, Archie. Moving on. Library director.
So as some of you already heard, library's carpeting project over the last weekend did not go quite as smoothly as I hoped. The distributor sent us the wrong color carpet tiles, and the installer did not discover that until he had ripped out all of the previous color. So we do have a different color in than was initially in plan to be in place. You know, the board didn't weigh in with me on a couple of different options. I really felt very strongly that we should not be bare concrete and tripping hazards for however long it should be before we get things back to rights. I have not heard from the installer who's been checking with the distributor. I did send him a message or something there today. Yeah, someone was up, but I haven't heard anymore. So just so you guys know, not quite as planned, although the moving part went beautifully, and thank you to public workers, especially Troy, who moved almost all the shelves on Friday with our help and not many people. So yeah, we may end up doing some work with that. In terms of upcoming programs, which is a much more happy thing to talk about, on Monday, December 2nd, at 3:00 PM, we will have Kerry Griffin, who is the author of "The Gunpoint Falling" at the library. That's a legacy program. And he's going around the region. That's our turn. We are going to be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th for Thanksgiving. Since it will be the first of December for the next council meeting, but I can tell you that the December take and make will be a snowman ornament with a lighted nose, and that the December spice club will be harder one. This will be our last spice club. At this point, the friends are priced out of what we can afford to give away as spices, and we have an exciting new idea for the new year coming up. So I'd like you guys to look forward to what's going to be coming next year in terms of take and makes for adults and families. If you want to ask me any questions, you certainly can. My answers to the carpeting stuff may very well be, I don't know yet.
It's an interesting contrast.
There was a lot of comments today.
Any questions for Rachel? Appreciate it. Glad you could make it here, Felicity.
Yeah, sorry. We're doing our yearly training for firearm qualification. We're shooting over in the back right now, so I just walked in, but Scott said I passed. That's good. Other than that, just another reminder about calendar parking. We will probably be starting to issue citations here in the next week, so that's all I got. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Cynthia Turner. Yes. I decided the whole agenda would just be focused on turning items since I was gone the last meeting. Hopefully, we should be able to go through these pretty quickly. But our first reading ordinance, 381, relative to regulating cannabis, is up for a first reading and for the council's review. As we know, we had a study session on this issue. There were compliance that I think the study that the council wanted to weigh in further, particularly the maximum number of licenses, whether it be retail or the low potency. Right now, it's set for 10 for lower potency and one for retail. And then, of course, the complement ordinance is 383, which is the zoning ordinance, which is, which really goes hand in hand and sets the locations for which these businesses could be. Currently, we have retail in C1. I did get a note from Planning and Zoning. They were requesting it also be in C2 would be in addition to that. And then any other license types of cannabis businesses will be done in industrial zones. And there are quite, there's quite an establishment of setbacks, as I'm sure the council has noticed in the revision on 383. Those came from Planning and Zoning. That was the recommendations from Planning and Zoning. Other cities have taken on different setback designations from schools, daycare's, residential treatment facilities, et cetera. But that was the recommendation from Planning and Zoning. So I sort of tied the two items together, but they really are one large change to the code. Be happy to talk about changes that the council is looking for in 381. We, of course, would have a public hearing on both these ordinances at the first meeting in December. We do need to implement by the end of the year.
Kelly?
Yes.
Angela?
I have, curious, on 381, second series, page 33, what does daycare have to do with cannabis?
Daycare would be, in essence, like a protected class of individuals, of people that we're looking, I think the legislator would say, we're looking to protect and to not have this type of sale close to a daycare facility. It's very similar, actually. Liquor has the same sort of restrictions and ordinances for liquor as well. So again, some of this is setback state statute. There are...
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Adam?
So we're, we're just looking at 381 right now.
Sure. Yep, go ahead. Any changes?
Sure. Yep, page 40.
Yep.
It's going to be the first paragraph on page, the table that's provided. You'll see about, "Set trading shall be at the expense of licenseee, shall be the rule of the entire three-day license suspension for first violation, and then it says, "In 10 of the 15-day license suspension." So looking at the chart, it looks like it should be six.
I agree. Thank you. I amended this chart pursuant to council request on the study session, so that is a good change.
On page 43, 13E.
Yes.
Insert staff department or elected body of evidence to approve or deny the requests. I believe that anything inside those parentheses, that should be strictly in city council place to say.
The council agrees to that.
Page 43 and 13E. The applicant has such process, the application fees, and the board, the application two. And then we have insert staff department or elected body of evidence. Which I'm making a motion after the replacement.
Not making a motion. We don't have any motions on the floor right now. We're discussing.
Gotcha.
There's not any. The quote I guess, there's not a motion.
Casey was just saying with the application itself, go to the council.
Once it's considered complete.
These two doors are...
And then forward the application to the council.
And you think we do give applications for defined applications? Yeah, they're significant among private information, so put it in your packet, for example.
Oh.
Recommendation comes to council.
Right. Not defined application.
About, you know, shall forward a recommendation, the front cell should shall forward a recommendation to the council. You don't need to say application.
Heard of a poll? Yes, no? Okay. Any consensus here?
There's a lot of head nodding.
I pay, well, I'm not taking everything in their hat currently. I look at the way they're nodding their head. I can have a better angle. Thank you.
And one last one.
Go ahead. Yes.
Okay. Page 49, and the letter G.
Yep.
Temporary campus unless shall be prohibited until the top week. As set forth in section 1115 of this code. And I understand 1115 has yet to be worked out?
It'll probably be 1113. I will amend it when we finalize this.
And then, should we strictly say prohibited or prohibited with the exception of a license?
On public property?
To keep it open for potential future events. We do, we do do licenses on public property, correct? Should this ever take that course being available as the exception existing licensure, which could, of course, be denied until we feel it is not successful or how it is?
I think that is the standard. I'm not positive on this, but my gut is that this state statute does not allow on public property. But I need to, you know, a lot of these rules are highly particular, so I have to just double check that.
Yeah, I think it does say public parks, schools.
Yeah.
And so it would have to be at a place where you could have an event. So more likely it'd just be private property.
Is this smoking cannabis or any cannabis? Because I know what violation there are.
It's, to my knowledge, it's all cannabinoid products. Because initially, this came about, I believe, when we passed edibles, but I could be wrong. I'd have to look into it, but I don't think we're going to allow people to have edibles in public parks or even marijuana.
On page 43, number 14, hours of operation. You've included lower potency hemp edibles and, you know, hemp drive products, which I didn't believe that those hours were the hours, you know, that we had limited to those hours at, you know, 10:09 in the previous hour. Currently, I believe hemp is, the drive products are more open in the hours than that?
Yes, that is, that particular provision relates back up to, if you look up page 41, this whole section that you're in, this code is for, is retail of cannabis business. So that's the retail section. So D and then all of these items moving forward up to 13 is about the retail of, the retail business itself. The low potency is actually on page, the whole, like, structure of it is found on page 35. That's where it talks about all the licensing requirements for low potency.
Yes, and I'm thinking that number 14 there should not include
You're right.
The low potency.
I got it.
That should be struck.
Thank you. I'm tracking it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, it's not the intention to establish.
So as we move forward, if we already have something for low potency, do we need to rewrite and put it in here or will the standard stay?
No, we're, we'll actually be omitting that portion of the code. You know, we previously put in a whole edible standard. All of that will be avoided. Is that what you're asking? Can you explain that again?
So was what you said just really good?
So originally, the state allowed for this low potency. We created a whole code section for lower potency. That will be omitted and voided in many places.
So that will all be rolled into here?
Correct.
Got it. When will it be put all to, yeah, when will they all?
December 1st. I just didn't get to that section. But yeah, I'm sorry, January 1st. Yeah, the episode started in here.
So we don't need to rewrite it?
No, because I'm basically revoking and amending.
Okay. So anything that was low, what we already have is going to stay?
It has been reclassified and this first portion.
Oh, this or that. Yeah. Thank you. Does that make sense?
Maintaining the intent of our previous work with the...
Correct. Yep. Any other questions?
Did you want to make a change to the numbers? It's 10 for lower potency and 10 for retail. I'm not pushing, just make any changes. It is an issue with the industry.
Yeah, I made it clear earlier that I felt that one, limiting to one was an issue. I think that it's, it's, would actually be better for the market turnout to dictate. I know there's, I know there was some pushback on my idea of more unlimited, but I did think that there was a kind of consensus that at least some market competition was good. So I feel one is way too strict.
Yeah, I agree with Al on this. I do, I would think that the setback's going to create more competition in the market report. So if we were to up that number, we'd also want to consider reexamining setbacks as listed in that 383. Would I be willing to put the number? Because I know we need a number. And if it exists as 10, is 10 too high? We probably wouldn't have the available zone for 10, but as an arbitrary number, would we drop to 5 or 10? Any?
I actually thought we had discussed like four or five. That's where, I kind of thought our consensus was when consensus was discussed earlier, which I'm certainly open to.
I think councilmember Cassin, he's not here tonight, but I think you checked it.
I think council member Cassin, he's not here tonight, but I think you checked it and then I decided I'll just leave it out for now. I'm in the council, so I'm not directing. So five, is that acceptable?
I am not willing to, um, work, look at the setbacks and reexamine that. I'm not sure what that means for, for this, what, what that means for how many spots are available. But, um, if we talk about what's fair or what's right, I think if we want a mirror, it's, it'll be for, for bigger sales. I, I think we need to stick close to that. This is something new on the market and, um, I, I'm not willing to be, to loosen that up.
You're referring, you're referring to the setbacks.
I'm referring to the setbacks, yes. So, uh, so I think that will relieve it us.
Five?
Yep.
As long as we keep the setbacks the same.
Conditional.
Go ahead.
Kelly, those setbacks were like maximum state statute.
Yeah, you can, I was looking at, um, St. Paul, I think the three hundred, I've seen a lot of changes on some of these. Um, but it's up to your.
Would, would it, would it be, uh, uh, possible to have a visual representation of how, how that might play out? These setbacks that we have? I mean, I don't know, those, those would probably also over a little mile. Um, you know, all my blocks, everything. And, and then what licensed take cares do we, do we have that?
What we can do is we can try to do our best as to those businesses we know that exist. And facilities that exist, residential facilities. We're aware of one new one that is actually opening. Uh, from Washington and Third Avenue, under the Catholic Church. Uh, we know where the churches are, so I think we could, we could try to do our best, uh, with businesses in locations that are currently, would fall under these. And then maybe we know about a couple other projects that are well underway that would also impact this. So maybe we can put a, put a map together just with some circles showing the radiuses and then kind of overlap within those zoning districts. Uh, Scott and I can work on that.
That'd be very helpful.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I realize that's kind of a big ask, but I, I think you want it. Also, we're, we're, uh, kind of finding, I think it's kind of an important part of getting this tomorrow.
Go ahead.
I've actually examined the radiuses from, um, the school under these setbacks. And on Sheridan, um, we have the, uh, from central to First Avenue West. And from tenth east to thirteenth east. Everything else would follow in that setback zones. Four Sheridan. We have one block on the west side and three blocks on the east side.
I think we need additional.
What we can do is we can put that together as soon as, soon as possible. And then we can just provide a copy of that to each counselor, uh, prior to the next meeting, obviously. So we'll get working on that probably tomorrow.
Thank you. And I understand, you know, we, we're putting all these things in, but can the state come, oh, yes, I'm sorry very much. Um, can the state come back and say, things, laws a little bit, would that affect our changes?
Certainly, um, I think, I think the state themselves are, you know, are trying to figure out how to implement this. Um, for the most part, I've tried to tie to the statute, so if they do make changes, our code will change as well. Um, I don't think the setbacks, you're gonna see changes on setbacks. I think if you see changes, it'll probably be on the school type and use and permits and, and items such as that.
And the second part question I asked, wanted to ask was, um, the lawyers, the bars are allowed to be open till, like, one in the morning, correct? I don't know what other bars are off, first, uh, one or two in the morning, I guess. But, um, well, do these people have to have the same allowance for that or not?
No, and I think that's what, um, council member Horson was pointing to, the reduced hours. So we're saying, um, ten AM to nine PM. Yep, yeah, so we're not obligated to, to do the longer hours.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that we can come back as well, we have these same dollars if these other people have been, they're prepared.
Regarding the setbacks, um, when they say that, are we talking from the edge of the property lines or are we talking from the center of the protection?
I believe the setback to be from the edge.
Yeah.
I think setbacks are. And I think to our council, this is point, I think you might be pretty accurate on those areas that you can reference. And we'll verify that tomorrow. Thank you.
And this is just the first reading. We still have plenty of time to think this through, to move forward with different things, to talk, to discuss, to debate, to think. To discuss, to debate this more. Right, so this is about. We do, um, although we will implement an ordinance before the next year. So it'd be good to see that, to see what exactly that is and what it is. Al, do you have something else?
I'm, I'm assuming you need a.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve the first reading of order number three eighty-one?
I agree.
Yes, yes, I would make that motion.
Is there support, support by Adam? Do we have any further discussion or questions, council? Casey's asked for you to make it as presented and then on the second reading, I'll make the changes.
I'm okay with that.
And we'll just continue to get further information as we move along. This is probably one of the bigger things we've done. That would be great. Casey, can you please? Are you ready to call the board?
Ready, alright.
Council member Al Horson?
Yes.
Podcasts, Jerome Bell?
Yes.
Brian Callen?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Visi?
Yes.
And Mary Almerson?
Yes. Thank you, council. Thank you for working on this and thank you planning and zoning. And we're gonna just continue and, or continue to move forward. If you have any questions, comments, or anything that you need answers on right away or think will help the council move forward. Um, please let Callen out or Harold or, or if it's back, you can continue to investigate.
Very perfect.
Thank you.
And the complement to this then is ordinance three eighty-three. And this will be a first reading. This is the ordinance that encompasses the zoning restrictions. Um, I did have a couple of comments and a couple of edits that I will be making. Um, most of them are more grammatical or types of issues. But if there's anything of substance, um, that the council wishes to amend. I think you can think through on that issue of distance once, um, your maps are provided. So perhaps for today, just to move this forward and provide this to the, to the citizens for a public hearing. It might be, um, sufficient.
Might I request that, uh, when the map is produced, um, with the setbacks, um, that additional, additional map be provided to show what these setbacks would look like if the numbers were lower? Should we, how much, what those, would be, just a, give a visual of how it exists and how and what it would exist, how it would exist if these numbers were lower? How much area would open up, or that area would be?
I'm not interested in that. You can vote on it, but I'm not interested in that. I'm, I want them to stay as is, I'll be honest. I would vote against that right now. I want them to stay as is. This is for the protection of schools, children, um, residents, treatment facilities, people that are going to athletics. And again, it's, uh, this, I want this. I'm not sure what the other council members, but I've not talked to anyone about this. This is what I want. I agree with you. I mean, that's how I feel. I'm not sure, I know there may be, and I feel that way, but me personally, that's what I feel.
Well, that was something we did with the liquor commission too, same thing. We had the same thing, keep that distance, somebody, I don't know, get, get better as well, or, you know, whatever happens, but that's a very important stuff.
We can vote on it and see.
Sure. I could explain some of my interest in seeing a second map that might show how if these numbers were adjusted in certain cases. Uh, that being, if there's no, um, way to get, for instance, if there's a, a ridge or a geographical, you know.
Yeah.
Anomaly, da-da-da-da, something where you could be within six hundred feet of the school, but there'd be no physical way for a child to reach that location. Any type of, just, I'd just like to see the map that if it were to exist with, say, seven fifty, four hundred feet, four hundred feet, four hundred one, four hundred feet. Just out of curiosity, just to look at.
Go ahead, Al.
I would say we can develop a map and if you're interested in other setbacks, we can revise that map on an individual basis. But to, you know, to speculate on what this and that and whatever, I think you put this map together first and then we can simply adjust those radiuses. And I'm talking about using Land Explorer, drawing radius circles is what it's going to be. And then looking at particular, um, facilities we're aware of or are underdeveloped and to, to make those decisions. Or to make those radiuses for most locations. So, um, yeah, we certainly can work with you on that, council Bisbee. So we'll put that together first. I'll stop for kind of tomorrow. Um, from there, if you have other questions, wanna look at certain areas, we can certainly look at that. We have industrial zoning out by the softball fields, obviously that's a problem. Little league and girls softball program utilize those fields. So you know, some of those other areas further out also have some limitations too, so we can do that. Not a problem.
Just to add, just one other point, so on the cannabis business, uh, retailer lower potency is permitted in C one. And then I got a note from planning and zoning, they're also asking for C two. So that's the change that I would make. So those setbacks, those buffer zones are irrespective. You need to be outside those buffer zones for you to have this permitted use. And the same is true for those industrial zones, for the industrial zone. It's just that if you were to be a cannabis cultivator, for example, you would actually have to get a conditional use permit in addition to being, um, setback or the bu- buffer zones.
So, um, I, I would, I would, I would assume right now, looking at this, that, that currently the majority of our lower potency retailers, uh, would, would not be licenseable the way they are with, with these setbacks as they're presented.
That is actually a good point. I could move lower potency to a whole separate category then and just allow it in C one, C two without a permitted zone. Without a buffer zone.
That is the way.
I don't remember, that is the way.
That is the way that it was permitted in that original ordinance, so I think her pulling off the low potency edibles, um, you know, that, that would correct that issue. Cause you're one hundred percent right, it would, you know, you have to look at who currently has a license and then probably, you know, adjust to that. But I think that would be appropriate.
So I will make that change for the next meeting. So if I understand right, C one, C two, lower potency, will be permitted use irrespective of those setbacks. Anything else? We have an ordinance that we can just.
Motion to approve the, uh, this reading, first reading of ordinance three.
Support. So we're drawn. Any further discussion? Casey? Council member Al Horson?
Yes.
Podcasts, Jerome Bell?
And.
Brian Callen?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Visi?
Yes.
And Mary Almerson?
Yes. Alright. Just happy to be here. Alright, next we get to schedule, we get to schedule a public hearing. We've spent even more time together discussing this. So, scheduled public hearing on ordinances three one and three three.
I've gotten, like, together with three two. I'm really curious now. Three eating two is, we're, it's on here, it's in here. Under old business.
Oh, it is, never mind.
Stuck in there.
Yeah, it's stuck in there, never mind.
I was getting exhausted and it needs to change.
Alright, so, um, on December third, twenty twenty-four at four thirty.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, public. You, you want to talk about, especially either people. Um, December third, four thirty. You can also email in. One more time to read it. Thank you. Alright. Next up. Our next item is a note of mortgage for Linda Enquist Bend and Brandon, ten thousand dollars for a new furnace. Need a motion moved by Al, supported by DeBrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
And then, uh, uh, a mo- note of mortgage for commercial renovation loan for generally seventeen thousand, uh, for new electrical services. For, um, for three apartment storage areas.
Motion moved by Angela, supported by Ryan. Any discussion?
Real quickly, is there a, a number of, um, note of mortgages?
Um, we do look for equity, um, and we do only have one at a time. So I was, generally if you had a note of mortgage already established, I would have you convert or I'd ask the applicant to convert that into a new one.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Moving on to communications. Something from St. Louis County regarding an update on the county's activities concerning the cannabis regulation. It's very exciting. I was hoping for a little bit more to help us guide us, but, um, quite what I hope for. I like the recodification, amend as amended or recodified from time to time. Do they do that on a regular basis?
Yeah.
They have quite an extensive consent agenda. I see that. I figured that out. Alright, and then also a communication from the Department of Revenue concerning the Board of Appeal and inclusive equalization training. We have eight person that is trained. Thank you, Angela. If anybody else is willing to get trained, taught, talk with Harold or anybody else from the clerk's office to get trained. Make sure we, we have a couple.
Yes.
Yeah, it's good to have three, in case somebody's gone and we have a meeting scheduled. We've had it happen before. If we don't have somebody certified, then it's an open book for how we need to deal with for the next year, including that year. So it's great to have three.
So if you're open, that'd be great. It's online, it's, it's online.
It's very, it's very, no warning, it's, you know, easy to hand, take it online and you might spend maybe an hour to do the process.
Alright, we also got a communication from the end of the board of managers. All right, we also got a communication from the end of the road archers. And then we have an addition from Northern Lakes House, open house invite to the council for December sixth, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, check it out. Go ahead, Aaron.
In regards to the end of the road archers, they are accepting donations for the council. This year they'll be hosting three hundred archers and their families and I tried to find the date, it looks like March eighth for here in the U of M. I was looking through the different levels of sponsorship and I see the weight tournament sponsorship for two hundred, the home tournament sponsorship for three hundred. I'd like to host it, we offer up a sponsorship for those tournaments if I'm possible. Something we can do.
Go ahead, Harold.
It's typically left up to the counselors if you like to donate. Don't typically donate to outside organizations. We have, we're trying to get multiple requests, obviously, but we support their activities in other ways. So individually, if you'd like to sponsor or donate, absolutely. But that's just kind of been the standard of counseling for venue.
Thanks for your time.
One of my customers is doing very well, so it's kind of fun, but help along. All right, claims for payment. Need a motion for one or all.
Some will be.
And you see in city for one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and four cents and then an invoice for A E two S for waste water treatment plans for the fire, sixty dollars and invoice for A E two S for general consulting services for eight thousand, thirty dollars and fifty cents. So we support. Support by Jerome. Need a discussion. Seen that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And old business, scheduled public hearing on December third, twenty twenty-four at five fifteen for ordinance number three seventy-eight in ordinance of City Hulee, Minnesota, amended chapter eleven, section eleven point four one of the U D city code regarding zoning district schedule. So moved by Angela, supported by... Adam, any discussion? Seen that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and then the second reading of ordinance number three two, second series in ordinance, ordinance of the city of Hulee, Minnesota, adding to U D city code chapter five point four one, alcoholic beverages licensing and regulation. I need a motion. Moved by Al, supported by Brian. Any discussion? Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I was just looking at the ordinance and it says not less than thirty guests, seated guests, are there enterprises with a liquor license or there's less than thirty seated guests? Is that pretty much a standard of state statute?
Any other questions? Casey, Paul. Councilmember Alpherson?
Yes.
Podcasts, Jerome Bellis?
Yes.
Ryan Callen?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Visi?
Yes.
And Marissa?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, League of Minnesota Cities Liability Coverage waiver form says clearly, we do not waive. Just making sure everyone understands that. Need a motion to accept that. Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, I haven't figured that out yet.
All right, Angela, you spoke that. Any discussion? Go ahead, Al.
Interesting, this is the part liability limits, we're not waiving the limit, meaning we're not going to say, well, we're going to remove the limit and open it up or whatever. So this is what we've done with the council, it's not the next year.
Any other discussion? Seen that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, consider Premier Pirate Tech next to shoot the twenty, twenty, two thousand twenty, what, twenty-four Fourth of July fireworks for two thousand, twenty thousand dollars, excuse me. Did I do that right?
Twenty-five.
I was going to say, yeah, like, wait a minute. My gosh. February day, twenty twenty-four. We got that, so we will move on to twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Is this support? Support apparently. Any discussion? Any discussion? I would like to say, I love having Fourth of July fireworks on in the Penn State, the Fourth of July. I guess one of the great days, one of the many great days about actually having Fourth of July. It's amazing. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She has? And proposed, the proposed twenty twenty-five City Hulee budget is before you. We're pretty agree on detail in three weeks, but there it is. I need a motion to accept our budget. Moved by Al. Supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Go ahead, Al.
And this actually does not show the amendment that we put in yesterday, so you should rather move to a amendment with, that's a, that's a possibility here, actually.
This wasn't approved.
We actually did approve this.
Yeah, we did. Well, it's before you. Did you guys...
Yeah, follow that impact other than the amendment. What was the percentage?
It is probably, well, a quarter percent that it's...
Harold? Do you want to add anything?
That is correct. That would be what it's changed to. As Al had mentioned, you did approve this budget with that amendment already, so it'd be redundant if you approve this and just put the same one.
Never mind, so about seven point three five. Any questions? All right, enter our last. How should we do this? Should we do open forum first? All right, is there anybody here for open forum? With that, clause being per Minnesota state statute, we need to discuss employee grievance at the end of our regular meeting. So we'll take about a ten minute recess, five minutes? Five minute recess and then we'll be, okay, so five minutes, so add it, thirty-five. We will be back.